Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And first start with our invocation and our collective allegiance.
Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for being here with us today. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity you give us to serve the community of Mission. We ask, Lord, for the protection of our citizens in our community and those in their surrounding neighborhoods. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Proclamation to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a proclamation on Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo County. Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor Council. Good afternoon. We'll be having a PowerPoint that'll be coming up shortly. We've got Ms. Pat Blum here with us to accept the proclamation, which reads as follows. Hidalgo County Children's Advocacy Center was established in the year 2000 when a local two-year-old's life ended tragically from abuse. Her memory is kept alive by helping and treating children who are victims of abuse. Hidalgo County Children's Advocacy Center, a nonprofit organization, is one of 800 children's advocacy centers nationwide, one of 71 certified children's advocacy centers in Texas, and the first child-focused facility and community-based program of its kind in Hidalgo County, servicing child abuse victims aged 2 to 17 years of age. Hidalgo County Children's Advocacy Center is to reduce the emotional trauma of child abuse victims, which supports the prevention of child abuse through community, education, and promotes the effective prosecution of those who perpetrate crimes against children. Hidalgo County Children's Advocacy Center gives hope, healing, and justice to victims of child abuse by providing a safe haven with a child-friendly, non-institutional environment where young victims are not afraid to tell their story. Revictimization of child victims is minimized by using a multidisciplinary team approach to child abuse investigations. Hidalgo's services include forensic interviews, debriefing, immediate crisis intervention, family advocacy, mental health services, prevention, and community education and outreach. Hidalgo's to raise awareness and funds for the organization, the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo County is having the annual Vinos Wine Extravaganza at Embassy Suites McCallum Convention Center on Saturday, February 17, 2018, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., featuring delicious food provided by local restaurants, fine wines, and amazing entertainment by premier showband Electric Circus and Renaissance Rockers. Now therefore be declared by the City Council of the City of Mission, they support this event to raise funds to support Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo County in their mission to stop child abuse, one child at a time, and give hope, healing, and justice to child abuse victims. Proclaimed on this the 22nd day of January, 2018.
Move for approval?
Second. We do have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. The rest of the proclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor, we've got Ms. Pat Blum here with us.
Tina Martin is the one who's going to say it today.
Bye. Good afternoon. Yes, definite support. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I am Tina Martin. I'm past president of the Children's Advocacy Center here in Hidalgo County, and as you know, Pat is our event coordinator. The Children's Advocacy Center serves as the first stop for children who are entering our justice system, who have either been suspected of being sexually abused, have severe physical abuse, or who have witnessed a violent crime. We provide vital services for these children and their families and facilitate the prosecution of predators through coordination of services using a collaborative approach with law enforcement and the district attorney's office. Last year, Children's Advocacy Center here in Hidalgo County served 1,337 child abuse victims. 247 of those victims came from the City of Mission. We are proud with the work that we do in collaboration with Chief Robert Dominguez, his staff, and his investigators who come to our center. Thank you, all of you, the Mayor and Commissioners, for the work that you have done for the children of Mission and the support that you have given the advocacy center and the impact that you've made on all of your children's lives. I cannot not say thank you again to you, Mayor, because you are the one who helped us locate our building and we were able to open our first satellite office here in Mission. And thank you to you, too.
You're welcome.
We invite all of you, when you get a chance, to let us know and come by and visit and see the work and the change that we have made in the building to make it more child-friendly. Again, I thank you for the proclamation. We are having Vinos on February 17 at 7:00. Local restaurants, food, wine, plenty of fun. We invite all of you to attend. We invite all of you to attend. So it's February 17, and thank you so very much and for all of your support, and please come by.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bueno, look, it is.
Thank you.
Out here. Want a picture?
You can have that. I'll take the other side. There we go.
Let me have Jessica send it to you. Where's the pen? I'll see if I can trace it on the things.
Rosalinda Delgado is here?
Yes.
Elizondo.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon.
Rosalinda Elizondo, I'm sorry.
Yes, Elizondo.
Presentation, go ahead.
Thank you for having me this afternoon. First of all, my name is Rosalinda Elizondo. I am an outreach and enrollment worker with Nuestra Clínica del Valle. Nuestra Clínica del Valle is a nonprofit community organization. We have 11 locations throughout the Rio Grande Valley. We do, our mission is to provide comprehensive preventive and primary care and cultivate partnerships with our patients and the healthcare services. Now, with that being said, we lead the way as a patient's medical home regardless of the social economic status of any patient. Now, the services that we provide is medical, dental, pharmacy, laboratory, x-rays. Also, we have OB and behavioral health education. Now, we do go based on a sliding fee scale. We do not turn away any patient regardless if they're not able to pay. So that's why I'm here today to inform a little bit of our organization. Now, with that being said, health centers offer a variety of affordable services for the community. And as you may all be aware, their health centers are at risk of losing funds at the moment, and actually, patients are at risk of also losing access to healthcare services if that was to happen with the funds. We are talking about homeless patients, elderly, also patients with behavioral health challenges. That would only lack healthcare for them, and that is actually their only hope for access to affordable service. Okay? So we put ourselves in their place or their shoes. These patients would always look for affordable options, okay? And these are our family, neighbors, or friends of ours. So now is the time to take action, and I do ask our elected officials for that. We urge the need for that funding for our patients, not only that, but to the community here in Mission.
Rosalinda, I think what you're coming down to telling us is that you need more space at this clinic here on.
Yes.
You need more space, and we help you build that. We gave you the property to build that.
Mm-hmm.
The clinic there, and what you really want is for us to come up with some money for more space. And I don't have any problem with that, but we need to sit down and talk about what you plan to build, or how big, or what are you talking about?
No, not actually. We're actually just, we want just, we only want an immediate long-term fix to the health center funding.
Well, we want you to take care of all the patients that you've been taking care of, and you've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Why don't you come back to Martine's office, and I'll sit down with you and Martine, and we'll look at it and see how much we can come up with.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? Rosalinda? No? Thank you.
Thank you for having me today. Thank you.
The next item is the report from the Chamber of Commerce.
We have a packed house today. Happy Monday. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. In terms of recent events, on Tuesday, January 9, 2018, we hosted our Team Go Mission 28 Launch Event, which was for our current and potential ambassadors. This event was held at our Members Business, which was Whistling Duck. We had approximately 30 people in attendance for this event. Next, on January 11, we hosted our first Buenos Aires Luncheon of 2018 with Secretary of State Pablo at Cimarron Country Club. This was a very well-attended event by the business community, and in total, we had approximately 240 people in attendance. On Tuesday, January 16, we hosted a ribbon cutting for the Children's Advocacy Center of Hidalgo County and specifically their Mission Satellite Office. Given the circumstances of the cold and rainy weather, we still had a good attendance for this event. I know the city had played an integral part in getting this location up and running, and it was certainly apparent that the Children's Advocacy Center was thankful for the city's role for this location. Yesterday, we had our 23rd Annual Mission Community Health Fair, which was held this past, yesterday, Sunday, at Sherland High School June. We had approximately 1,000 people in attendance throughout the day. I'm happy to announce that preliminary reports confirm that we gave out over 200 flu vaccines, which was the most ever given according to Mission Regional Medical Center. In terms of upcoming events, tomorrow, we have a ribbon cutting at 10:30 in the morning for one of our newest members. The member is the Shack Supplements and Shakes, which will be located at 3314 North Conway Avenue here in Mission, Texas. The event will take place from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., with the ribbon cutting taking place right at 11:00. So we certainly invite the Mayor and City Council to that. On Thursday, February 1, we will be hosting a business mixer from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at our Members' location, Bob's Steak and Chop House. The cost to attend the mixer will be $20 to attend this event. And then lastly, on the agenda, we have our mega winter Texan Fiesta, which will be held Saturday, February 10, and it'll happen here on 8th Street and off of Bryant Road. So we certainly look forward to that as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the Department Report. They're in your packet. Any changes?
I move to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Department Report as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Sees as a participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? Go ahead. State your name.
My name is Carl Walker. I live at 606 Lakeview Drive.
Come by, you'll state your name.
Oh, no, he's talking about this one. Okay. Well, he said I wanted to address the council. I did. He knows I'm right.
Sit down. Anybody that would like to address the council? If not, we'll go on to our public hearings, and we'll start with item 1.1A, and this is where you all come in. Conditional use permit for the store at 4109 Mile Road, south of Lot 1.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through store at 4109 Mile 1 South Road, being Lot 1 of Valle Hermoso Estate Subdivision. The property is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, and the applicant is Reynaldo Gonzalez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Benson Palm Road and 1 Mile South. The applicant is proposing a drive-through store at this corner lot, and access to the site will be off of 1 Mile South Road, and then they would exit onto Benson Palm Road. The hours of operation are every day from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Total of six employees, two shifts per day will man the operation, and they did submit a rendering with proposed landscaping and parking, which does meet city code. One of the things that I did advise the applicant in looking at this site plan, this is the site plan that he submitted, it has the traffic coming in from Benson Road and exiting onto 1 Mile South Road. I told the applicant to switch it around to enter from 1 Mile South Road and exit onto Benson Palm Road. That way, traffic at night, when they're exiting, they wouldn't shine the lights on the subdivision to the north side. This eliminates that altogether. There was public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The concerns voiced included that the area was not suitable for commercial, that it would create more traffic, theft, and security issues. A petition in opposition was also submitted from the adjacent RV park. The board unanimously recommended denial. Staff, however, is recommending approval, subject to one-year approval to assess this new business and if they comply with all building, fire, and health codes, and that they acquire a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request?
Good afternoon.
State your name and.
Ms. Lemos, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us here today. Thank you for having taken us into Mission eight, 10 years ago. We appreciate it. The reason we came into Mission, Mr. Garcia will remember, and I'm sure Ms. Lemos will remember, was because we wanted to feel safe and protected. We don't want this because it will take away our safety and our protection, but that isn't the only reason. I'd like to say to you all today, before you make any decision in favor of this, I would like to invite all of you, please, to come and see the little chandelier that we have created on Benson Palm Drive. It's beautiful. It's a haven for the birds. We have fountains playing. It is absolutely idyllic. Please don't take that idyl away from us. We are here for our time and days. I've lived here now 30 years. The first time my husband and I came here was in 1987. We fell in love with the park. It was small. It, pardon me, it was compact. It was, it was just what we were looking for. And at the time, we were both working. Although I'm now nearly 84, my husband's nearly 95, when we came here, we were working, and we spent as much time as we could here because we loved it. We loved the people, and we loved it. We didn't own the park. And in fact, the gentleman who owned the park had to sell it the year my husband got prostate cancer. Or we would have said, we'll buy it. We'll do something. But because my husband was in hospital, he didn't approach us. He sold it to a charlatan from Florida, who had only one thing in mind, one purpose in mind, run it into the ground, get what he could out of it, and run with the money. Well, my mother was alive then. She was 91 years of age in 2002, and she said, "You love it here, don't you? This is your haven. If you don't buy this park, it will be into the ground in nine months." And we said, "We can't afford to buy the park. We don't have that sort of money. Do something. Get in touch with Mr. Moser and ask him what arrangements, Mosley, and ask him what arrangements he has with this man." So we did. And he said, "Oh, yes, he has it mortgaged to me. I'd be very happy to mortgage it to you, but he won't money." So I said, "Well, if we can raise enough money to pay this man off and accept your mortgage, we're going to do it." Well, we did. It was great hardship. At that time, we're both working, still working, so we poured every bit of our pension into this little park. There's only 110 lettable sites. You cannot make a profit out of 110 lettable sites unless you're running it yourself. We can't run it ourselves. We're too old. We have wonderful people running it for us, and wonderful, wonderful residents. They're all here. They're all here to tell you how they love being in this little bit of Mission, and they don't want this peace taken away from us. I said to the committee last week, if this Mr. Hernando really didn't even bother to turn up at the last meeting, that's how badly he wants it, or either he knows he's already got it, one way or the other, he wasn't here last week, and then someone said, "Oh, yes, he did come in, and he saw that the place was full, so he left." Oh, how cocky is that? I wouldn't care if the place was 20 times full if I wanted something. I'd be here to make sure I got my word in. He didn't care. He doesn't even live in Mission. He lives in Rio Grande City. Let him go open one there on his own doorstep. He doesn't need it here. Would you, would you please, would you please accept?
But he lives there exactly where he wants to, he has a house there.
I can't hear with someone.
He lives there right where he wants to build his drive-through.
I'm sorry.
He's saying that the Mr. Hernandez or Mr. Gonzalez lives in that area right now?
Well, his address is Rio Grande City.
Well.
So I was told that this is the gentleman who's buying it, or owns it? Or maybe I've been given the wrong information. I'm sorry. But anyway, anyway, he shouldn't have had permission to make it commercial in the first place had we been informed.
It's already.
Who was supposedly informed, supposedly informed in 2013.
It's already commercial.
Sorry?
It's already commercial.
In 2013, it was zoned commercial.
Yes.
Right. Well, we were never notified it was being zoned. Supposedly, we were notified twice. Well, it's quite amazing, Ms. Lemos. We always get our tax bills.
You get your tax bill, but not the one that.
And we didn't get two notifications. That is absolutely unbelievable.
But anyway, what I'm going to recommend is that we go ahead and turn him down.
Could you, please, because my ears don't pick this up.
What I'm going to recommend is that we go ahead and deny his request, and deny the city manager's recommendation, and I'm going to ask them to vote against the request.
My offer to all of you still stands. Please, please come to our little park. Look what we've done with it. It's a paradise.
Well, I want you to, I want you all to understand that he is a young man trying to do something. He has a business in Rio Grande City, builds homes. He's a builder. And he has asked me that he doesn't want any problems with his neighbors, and that he wants to let it grow itself right now, and that he has all respect for all the people that live out there, and we cannot do anything that they request that people around them would not want to. So he's.
The applicant has withdrawn his request.
Sorry? Thank you very much. Thank you. We're very, very happy. I still want, I'm very happy about this, immensely happy, and I still want all of you, two, four, five of you, please come to us. Please come, pay us a visit.
We will ask them to vote against it.
You know, we're not snowbirds.
I'm arguing that a snowbird.
We're missionaries.
That's right.
And we, we value what we've got and appreciate having been in Mission the last eight, 10 years. We love it. Thank you very much for listening to us.
We do have a motion from the Senate to deny.
We deny.
And a second?
Just second it.
It's seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. I hope you all come back again. And we all have given you a tax break in the City of Mission, a big tax break, I think, in the last few years.
I made an offer. I made an offer when I was here last week, and I said, "If this man wants to sell that piece of land, and he's going to be reasonable about it, talk to me. Our park will try and raise the necessary funds so we can leave it there in peace, just to be part of our chandelier."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming. We'll go on to our next item. Let's wait till we get some relief in the room.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get there right now, as soon as we're done with the public hearings.
No, I'm just, I'm.
You're going to Mr. Gonzalez?
The one with the beer.
Thank you so much for coming.
No, no, the one on the third row.
I checked myself out of hospital. I've just had spinal surgery.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I was determined to be here to talk about.
Well, thank you for coming. You did very well.
Thank you. Was he okay with it?
Thank you so much.
I don't know what to say.
Oh, yes, I will. I will, definitely, yes. Yes, we will. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, item B, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-time consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Palms Two Lounge. The address is 600 East 9th Street, being lots 11 through 15 of Block 142, Mission Original Townsite Subdivision. Property is currently zoned C3, and the applicant is Damian Fidel Solis. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 10, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of 9th Street and St. Marie. The Palms has been in existence for over 20 years now. The City Council on October 11 of 1993 approved a life of use to the owner back then. However, in 2013, it changed its ownerships, and Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez took ownership of the operation and has been operating there since. He has since signed a deal with the, with Fidel Solis, and Fidel Solis is going to take over ownership of the.
But anyway, anyway, he shouldn't have had permission to make it commercial in the first place, had we been informed.
It's already.
Who was supposedly informed, supposedly informed in twenty thirteen.
It's already commercial.
Comma, sorry?
It's already commercial.
In twenty thirteen, it was zoned commercial?
Yes.
Right. Well, we were never notified it was being zoned. Supposedly, we were notified twice. Well, it's quite amazing, there's a little, we always get our tax bills.
You get your debt bill, but not the one that.
And we didn't get two notifications. That is absolutely unbelievable.
But anyway, what I'm going to recommend is that we go ahead and turn him down.
Could you, please, because my ears don't pick this up.
What I'm going to recommend is that we go ahead and deny his request and deny the city manager's recommendation. And I'm going to ask them to vote against the request. And whenever.
My offer to all of you still stands. Please, please come to our little park. Look what we've done with it. It's a paradise.
Well, I want you to, I want you all to understand that he is a young man trying to do something. He has a business in Rio Grande City, built homes. He's a builder. And he has asked me that, he doesn't want any problems with his neighbors and that he wants to let it grow itself right now. And that he has all the respect for all the people that live around there. And we cannot do anything that they request, that people around them would not want to. So he's.
The applicant has withdrawn his request.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're very, very happy. I still want, I'm very happy about this, immensely happy. And I still want all of you, two, four, five of you, please come to us, please come pay us a visit.
We will ask them to vote against it.
You know, we're not snowbirds.
I'm arguing that as snowbirds.
We're Missionites.
That's right.
And we, we value what we've got and appreciate having been in Mission the last eight, ten years. We love it. Thank you very much for listening to us.
You do have a motion from the Snowbird.
They are later to deny.
And a second?
Just second it.
It's seconded. All those in favor, go, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gas motion carries. I hope you will come back again. And we all have given you a tax break in the city of Mission, a big tax break, I think, in the last few years.
I made an offer, I made an offer when I was here last week. And I said, if this man wants to sell that piece of land and he's going to be reasonable about it, talk to me, our park will try and raise the necessary funds so we can leave it there in peace, just, just to be part of our chandrelar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming. We'll go on to our next item. Let's wait till we get some relief in the room.
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get there right now, as soon as we're done with the public hearings.
No, I'm just, I'm.
You're Mr. Gonzalez? The one with the beer.
Thank you so much for coming.
No, no, the one on the third row.
I checked myself out of hospital, I've just had spinal surgery.
Oh my goodness.
Because I was determined to be here to talk about.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Was he okay with it?
Thank you so much, thank you.
Next item, item B, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mayor Council, item one point one B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-time consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Palms Two Lounge. The address is six hundred East Ninth Street, being lots eleven through fifteen of block one forty-two, Mission original townsite subdivision. Property is currently zoned C three and the applicant is Damian Fidel Solis. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Ninth Street and Saint Marie. The Palms has been in existence for over twenty years now. The city council on October eleventh of nineteen ninety-three approved a life of use to the owner back then. However, in two thousand and thirteen, it changed ownerships and Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez took ownership of the operation and has been operating there since. He has since signed a deal with the, with Fidel Solis and Fidel Solis is going to take over ownership of the operation. And he requires to have his own conditional use permit as they are not transferable. Mr. Solis intends to keep the operations as they are today. The hours of operations are Monday through Friday from ten AM to twelve AM and Saturday from ten AM to one AM and Sunday from twelve PM to twelve AM. A total of three to five employees manage this operation. And this building is within the central business district, so it is exempt from parking, although they do have some parking on site. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item one point one B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve the use, the conditional use permit?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
And also, approve ordinance forty-five eighty-eight. We do have a motion?
Eighty-seven, sir.
Eighty-seven, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gas motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor Council, item one point one C is a public hearing for a rezoning of two point nine acres, a three acre deed call out of lot sixteen dash six, West Edition of Sherland subdivision. The property is currently zoned C three general business and the applicant applied for a light industrial or I one rezoning. The applicant is South Texas Infrastructure Group in care of Victor Trevino. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located twelve hundred feet west of Conway Boulevard along the south side of US Expressway eighty-three frontage. The surrounding zones include general commercial to the north, agriculture open interim to the east and to the west. We also have C four heavy commercial to the west. And to the south, you have agriculture open permanent. In talking to the applicant, the intent is to have a cold storage facility. So one of the things that I told the applicant is that you can have a cold storage facility in a C four or in a heavy commercial zoning district. So he was receptive to the lesser C four zoning because it still meets his needs. So at the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended denial of the light industrial zoning, but did favor the heavy commercial zoning of a C four. Staff has also recommended denial of light industrial, but consideration of the heavy commercial C four designation. Our city manager is also in support of the C four. This is a public hearing, item one point one C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we have to go ahead and recommend, accept the recommendation and approve ordinance forty-five eighty-eight.
I move to approve the C four zoning as presented.
We do have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gas motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor Council, item one point one D is a public hearing for a rezoning of a fourteen point thirty-three acre tract of land, more or less, lying north of Expressway eighty-three. Comprised of one point nine acres of lot one, three point twelve acres of lot two and nine point three three acres of lot three of the Goodwin Tract subdivision number three. The property is currently zoned agriculture open interim and the request is to rezonate to a C three general commercial. The applicant is South Texas Infrastructure Group in care of Victor Trevino. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Expressway eighty-three and Inspiration Road. The surrounding zones include R one single family to the north, a mixture of uses to the east and west. And to the south, we do have more general commercial. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. Staff is recommending approval of the C three rezoning, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, item one point one D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? You in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We just settled sixteen oh two Solar Drive. I'm in favor of the property, it's going to be developed really nice with, but six commercial centers in it.
Okay, the recommendation is for us to go ahead and accept the rezoning and also adopt the ordinance forty-five eighty-nine.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gas motion carries. Item E.
Thank you, Mayor Council, item one point one E is a public hearing for a rezoning of a point six five acre tract of land of Meadow Creek Country Club, Phase Two A subdivision. The property is zoned PUD agriculture open permanent and the request is to change the zoning to PUD C two neighborhood commercial. The applicant is Olaguer Bousa. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January twelfth, tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Mile One South Road and Inspiration Road. The irregular lot has a total square footage of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square feet. The surrounding zones include R three multifamily to the north. To the east, you have more agriculture, which is actually the golf course. To the west, you have planned unit development. And to the south, you also have planned unit development, R five or high density manufactured. When viewing the corner lot and its location on one mile south road and inspiration, C two does appear to be perhaps a better land use than the current agriculture land use. There was public opposition during the PNC meeting. The concerns voiced include that the area was not suitable for commercial, that there would be additional noise and traffic. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, item one point one E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Go ahead, ma'am. Who's in favor and who's against?
Favor?
Okay.
Hello, I'm Loris Bousa. If you may allow me to give you this.
As you're recommending, favor? We're recommending approval, so you don't really have to.
Yes.
But you want to go through there, okay?
Yes. Well, here, I'm passing some facts to clarify some of the wrong information about the properties and ones that's been developed, but are not ours. There's sixty-nine townhouses in Mile One are not owned by us, by my husband and me. And we don't sell that land also. That property was on an auction with a package of another lots. Where they've been owned by Greshman, the last owner. And the bank took them because they didn't pay for the mortgage. We are not part of any HOA and neither of the homes closest to this area. The HOA do not provide any monetary funds or any other kind of resources of support to the golf course. The golf course is not responsible of any subdivision. We have not sold any land on the golf course as they have been telling. We are not going to dismantle the golf course. We are more far from the green on number six than the sixty-nine townhouses are from the hole number five, in which this case nobody objected to be built. And that for sure is affecting our course in some way because we had to move the car pad on our expense. The majority of the people that opposed to this project are more than half of a mile away from the area. You could ask them where they live and they will not have any affection. The people, they don't have a good objection because it did not affect their lives in any way. And the majority, they are not golfing anymore in our courts. For our goodwill, we gave twenty feet from closest of any property belonging to the, to the homeowners. If you say we'll be facing Inspiration Road on Mile One, this road will be expanded in the next year, the Inspiration Road, and to the west, and will bring more commercial properties and opportunities to this area in the future. The city of Mission is growing and we cannot stop the future growth. The city of Mission and the planning and zoning department have already approved this change twice. And the people in charge of this department are well knowledgeable about the planning on the city and they are grateful to this, that this is a great city to grow and bring more revenue in behalf of the citizens. There will be no people that always, there will be people that always object to change. But if they want that this great city to be grown and we need to trust to these authorities who's already studied the area and they know what is the best for the city. The majority of the people living in the subdivision are from north and they will be gone and returned to their primary residence in another state in April. We just need this change of sound so we can invest in the golf course and continue helping to grow Mission. Thank you to the city council and for your consideration to rezoning.
Okay. Anybody against?
I, I just came up in case she had trouble with her English. And she didn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we get the people in opposition, I did want to mention that we received a petition against this rezoning today that has thirty-nine percent in opposition. Anytime there's over twenty percent in opposition, it requires a majority vote. Being that Dr. Okan is not here today, it would require.
Four votes.
Four votes.
We have four votes today?
Yes.
Maybe against or maybe, I mean, I'm not sure how they vote, but.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm John Young, AO five Lakeview Drive. First of all, we would like to thank you, Mayor, for moving this meeting from last summer till today, so everybody from the north can be down here and here. We've got some concerns as far as Inspiration Road being widened. Coming from the south, there'll be a right turn lane onto Mile One, okay? When the school's on, coming from the west on Mile One, crossing Inspiration Road and coming from the north, going south on Inspiration Road, the left turn lane. Whenever there's an opening on Inspiration Road, those cars fly through there. We're concerned that with an entrance in off of Mile One, people are going to try to turn left or turn right into the property and you're going to have all kinds of rear-end collisions, is what it seems like. Also, the buffer wall that will come off of lot sixty on the east corner, straight across to Mile One, will come within seven foot of the green. Therefore, any balls overshooting the green will consequentially hit the building, hit people, hit the parking lot and wind up on Inspiration Road, possibly causing an accident. From what we understand, there's going to be a donut shop, pizza shop and a subway, okay? At four o'clock in the morning, the donut people will come in to get product ready for six o'clock sales. The pizza joint and subway will stay open till ten o'clock. Time they get to cleaning up and everything, it'll be eleven o'clock. So from eleven o'clock at night till five o'clock or four o'clock in the morning is the only time no one will be there and be no noise. The, I've got a hundred and nine signatures against this rezoning. Also, on the Texas land vote and zoning and, and planning law, the purpose of zoning is to preserve the property values and make towns and cities more livable. For example, without zoning laws, a company might be able to buy a vacant lot next year and have a, your house and build a noisy, smelly, dirty factory. Well, believe me, if you've ever been in the restaurant business behind the buildings and everything, it is dirty and it is smelly and it will affect the neighborhood. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anybody, you against?
Hi, my name is Thomas Morgan and I live at six oh two Lakeview Drive. I'm one of the two properties directly affected, there are several that are more indirectly affected. The house next to me, which is at six hundred Lakeview Drive, was recently purchased by Christina Jose, just a couple of months before, so I do not know them well. I spoke to Christina today and asked her if she was just to speak today. She said she did not, so I'm speaking for her. The people who live on my easterly side, which would be at six oh four Lakeview Drive, are Linda and Douglas Wright. They live in Eustis, Texas and they come down here and we're planning to be here on a permanent basis, but he has blood issues and is currently in the hospital. Linda asked me if I would speak on her behalf. I do not want you to regard the crutches as looking for sympathy, I am not doing that. I am looking for empathy. If you will come, excuse me, and sit in my bedroom at ten o'clock at night, you can read the newspaper from the safety lights from the Dollar General store, which is three hundred feet away from me. If this goes through as you propose, you're going to be putting safety lights thirty times closer to my house. On the property line, lights don't stop, noises don't stop, odors don't stop. All of that is going to impact greatly the property that I purchased here in two thousand and six. I am a Texas resident, a homeowner, I came to Mission, I wish that lady was here, here, excuse me, to speak for me, as she so eloquently did, because I bought my piece of chandrelar also. And I'm being a little selfish about that, but I told Linda that I would be saying that she said, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm assuming Christina, who said she would be here today, would also say that's true. I just, I just need you to think about what it would be like in your own home, in your own bedroom, to have lights on a continuous nighttime basis, not to mention the rest of the material objections that I've already stated to you. I thank you for listening to me and I hope you will consider the code of the city of Mission, which says we're supposed to live in peace and harmony. And I do not believe that that is peace and harmony. And I do think sincerely that you can help us find a way to work this out for the impact of our properties. And I realize I'm being selfish on that, but it is what I purchased to live in and to reside in the city of Mission. I thank you for listening for me.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, Carl Walker, six oh six Lakeview Drive, right next to where we're at. I have here sixty-seven letters representing about one point seven million dollars in property taxes, signed by my neighbors and most of them live within a half mile of this projected zoning change. I want to read one of the letters that was better written than mine. Says, "Commercial development represents an incursion into our well-maintained residential community. Such development would reduce the enjoyment of the personal properties by the residents of Meadow Creek subdivision, potentially reduce values and less tax revenues for the city of Mission as well as creating additional traffic at an already busy intersection. At this time, we have not been made aware of the proposed usage except by rumor of said property. There are no studies regarding traffic or environmental impact, no information has been provided regarding parking, landscaping and other issues outlined in the zoning requirements of the city of Mission." Thank you for listening to me. I would love to present these letters to someone, to peruse.
Right here.
I had emailed you some this morning, I don't know if you.
Yes.
Fifty-three page Gmail. Yeah, this, well, since I got here, letters keep coming. I got another thirteen since then. Thank you very much.
We also have signatures from people that live there that are full-time residents, that live there full-time year-round, who do not oppose this project being done, so I'd like to present.
Okay, did you do?
How many?
Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. So I'm Christina, I'm the neighbor that didn't wish to speak. But since I'm already here, basically, I'm a first-time owner, I just moved in six months ago. Like you said, it is very noisy with cars passing by and the lights do bother us and stuff like that. Unfortunately, my husband works out of town, so for my own safety, it is very, you know, concerning for me. I have two pit bulls and I have arms because I feel like I'm already not safe, just because of that. And then, I don't know, I do, not too long ago, it's, the golf course or whoever is in charge of the landscaping and whatnot have the fence and the grass is tall and there's trees all over. And not too long ago, a scorpion came into my house, so I was concerned about that and I've been calling them and they just don't take care of it for whatever reason. And so that concerns me for like instance, if there's going to be restaurants, there's going to be rats, there's going to be trash cans and stuff like that. So it is very concerning to me. I was not aware there was a commercial lot, if it were, if I would have known that, I would have never bought that house. I did choose Mission, I lived in far my. Um, like you said, it is very noisy with cars passing by and the lights do bother us and stuff like that. Unfortunately, my husband works out of town, so for my own safety, it is very, you know, concerning for me. Um, I have two pit bulls and I have arms because I feel like I'm already not safe, um, just because of that. And then, um, I don't know, I do, uh, not too long ago, it's, the golf course or whoever is in charge of the landscaping and whatnot have the fence and the grass is tall and there's trees all over. And, uh, not too long ago, a scorpion came into my house, so I was concerned about that and I've been calling them and they just don't take care of it for whatever reason. And so that concerns me for like instance, if there's gonna be restaurants, there's gonna be rats, there's gonna be trash cans and stuff like that. So, it is very concerning to me. I was not aware that it was a commercial lot. If it were, if I would've known that, I would've never bought that house. Um, I did choose Mission. Um, I lived in farm my whole life, however, for work I do do a lot of marketing and Mission was my choice. And, um, I, I did come into this community knowing that it was a lot of seniors, citizens or winter Texans, uh, knowing that I would be safe. Me and my husband opted to live there because of that. So, um, being this, that, it, it might be something that they're not okay with. They might, you know, choose to go somewhere else, not knowing what kind of neighbors it's, you know, gonna come and live there at that point. It gets a little concerning to me since I do live by myself most of the time. So, I, of course, am not okay with this and I really wish that you guys vote against it.
So, you're completely against it?
Sorry?
You in favor or against?
I do not want anything...
Okay, no problems, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is the last one, so, 'cause we got, we gotta...
John Peterson, six oh five Lakeview Drive. I'm highly impacted by this project. I'm right across the street from the houses. I met with the planner and one of his assistants, spent a lot of time with him, going through what information they had, and was quite shocked to see that something with such a big impact on the neighborhood, there was nothing more than an overlay over an aerial. There's no renderings of what they're gonna build there, what kind of materials they're gonna use, where they're gonna put a dumpster even, and a twenty-foot buffer. It's, it's amazing to me. I do believe, and I got one question, I think the planner could answer it. Is the property we talking about right now, is that part of the golf course right now?
No.
Is that, that's a completely separate piece, like an outlet?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that part of the golf course?
I mean, they've been mowing it.
Huh?
They've been mowing it and maintaining it, so I would guess it to be part of the golf course.
I don't know.
I've hit golf balls...
I've been told it's not.
Huh?
I've been told it's not.
Well, the reason I asked that question was...
You can answer that, the owner's here.
It's just the owner there. She can, she can tell you.
Okay. We own all the, the golf course and the lands that are near the golf course. We know because the ordinance of the city of Mission, we have to know. Because if no people is calling, there is no mode, and then we have to pay fees. That's right? We have to maintain it clean and everything. Those parts, for example, in the sending room, that lands, that are no ours and they are mode.
Have you subdivided the little piece, the little piece where you're gonna build?
It's not part of the golf course.
Huh?
If not, it's not part of the golf course, that part of the, the only thing that is...
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Is it part of the golf course?
Yeah.
Can you tell me?
The part of the golf course is only the tee box over there, but not the other side.
Okay, but is this, are you going to be...
Owned, yes.
Are not part of the golf course?
No, it's owned by the same company of all the lands.
That is not part of the golf course?
It doesn't, no, the golf course in that part.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I just want to add is like, all the construction is gonna be facing out with a big fence, yes.
Let me tell you, I just wanted to ask you a question. Is it part of the golf course?
The tee box, only the tee box.
Okay, but the buildings that you're gonna build are part of the golf course?
It's not going to be part of the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the same owner of all the lands over there.
Okay.
The construction is gonna be...
Same owner then?
Yes.
You're not subdivided? Who are you going to build?
Subdivided?
Who are you? Who's the man? Is this your client?
Yes, sir.
Have you subdivided the property, who are you gonna build that?
No, we gotta go through the rezoning process first and then...
You're going to go through this process?
We gotta go through this process first in order for us to...
So, you're gonna re, take it away from the golf course?
Yeah, basically, yes.
Okay.
It's got a hundred and thirty acres, how much?
When are you going to...
Sixty-five acres.
When are you gonna go to do that?
As soon as possible. As soon as this is passed, uh, we go through the subdivision process and...
That's your question.
So, it is part of the golf course, is that my understanding?
Not, not...
Is it, well, in the city, uh, zoning map does it shows another lot?
Okay. We have, we have to go through a process. This is part of the process, okay? Thank you.
So, my question would be then...
Then, he, she answered the question already.
It is part of the golf course.
No, I, I, what I'm, was gonna propose or ask, just one last question and I'll sit down. Why can't we take that same chunk of land, bring it down on mile one, right next to where the restrooms are, it won't affect any of the golf course, and it would affect no neighbors?
We cannot do that. It doesn't belong to us. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, the recommendation from staff...
Question from the floor.
Yes.
I would like it clear. Is the tee box, which is on the property, shown part of the golf course before not...
I, I, I think the question that...
It's been used as part of the golf course for over twenty years.
Any, are the, any of the improvements that are being proposed affecting the golf course? You have, how many holes do you have right now? Eighteen holes?
I have eighteen holes.
Okay. The proposed project, is it gonna affect the eighteen holes or are you still gonna have eighteen holes?
I'm still gonna have eighteen holes. The only thing we are gonna move forward is a tee box, but that's not affecting anything, not even the layout, nothing.
So, you need to move a tee box? To answer his question, you're moving a tee box that's part of the golf course right now.
Yes.
However, the moving of that tee box, you'll still have eighteen holes...
That's correct.
If you have a complete golf...
That's correct. It's like, for example, if we're talking about the townhouses over there, I have to move my car path so we can have access.
Okay.
We have to move it and still have a part of the golf course.
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a recommendation. Why don't you go ahead and re-subdivide your whole property and separate what you wanna build on from the golf course?
That's what we are gonna do right now.
But you want us to give you, you want us to give you a rezoning of zero point sixty-five acres?
That's the part.
See, when you have to, what you really need to do, hey, what she needs to do is re-subdivide, will you? And get it out of the golf course so we can act on it. We cannot act on this today because it's part of the golf course.
Okay.
And they're right. You all have to go, you all have to go, you all have to go back to planning and zoning and ask and do a subdivision plan. Get it out of the golf course. It's your property, you can do whatever you want to with it. They're gonna give you a permit, they're gonna, they're gonna allow you to re-subdivide. See, but you don't wanna sub, re-subdivide, you want this first and then go back over there. You cannot do, you need to go over there first and then come back to us.
No, they told me to change the zoning first.
Whoever told you to come here first is not right.
Okay.
You, you have to bring us a subdivision separating the golf course from this property.
Okay.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I would, I mean, I can understand now, I thought it was already separated from the golf course.
No, well, um, they do, uh, you know, the...
CUP what?
In the description, they say that when we bought, we can use the, the, the parts of land that are around on the golf course. And that's why we already changed the zone of a lot of lots here and then they are pre- built. And this is just another part.
You want to use part of your golf course, golf course property and build some, something there, an apartments or whatever it is?
It is not part of the golf course, only are the tee box.
You wanna build four, four buildings there, right?
Well, four commercial locals facing to the road. It's not affecting anything, it's outside of the golf course, independent.
But you got it, you cannot, and then they're right because you are trying to build something in the golf course.
In my property, but it's not, it's not part of the plan.
Separate it, you have to separate it. You gotta give to anybody, if I have a piece of property and I wanna build a house, I gotta, I gotta bring it before and make a subdivision plan, one acre subdivision plan for one house. But see, in my property, I have to do that. Anywhere here in Mission, you gotta do this here also.
So, I got one question just for my...
An engineer, he can do it for you?
We will, we will go ahead and follow the, the direction of...
Well, I mean, what else can you do? You wanna build it in, in the golf course, it's part of the golf course. You gotta get it out of the golf course and then build, and all you need to do then, not come over here, is you go and get a building permit in that separate lot.
We gotta come back and do the...
Well, whatever, you have to do it, approve it here. You have to approve it different map here, where you, where you do the, your subdivision plan, you bring it here so we can approve it.
Okay.
And then you can build on it.
We'll do that.
You cannot build on it while it belongs to the golf course. And who owns the golf course?
They do.
They can do anything with that piece of property if they want. But they're right, you want us to act on something that is owned by the golf course?
Okay.
It's not part of the park.
We'll go ahead and follow the, the recommendation and subdivide it and go forward and bring it back to the council.
Exactly, and do that and you have no problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you think I'll be charged about?
Will that process be followed? Will there be a public hearing?
Huh?
Will there be a room as you change the structure?
I'll wait, perguntale, what could they...
It will remain a public hearing, sir.
It will be notified, it, it'll be published in the newspaper, that it's gonna be a public hearing, it's not gonna be notified. So, this is a done deal.
It be, it be the same thing, huh? Nothing is gonna change.
When they come back to rezon, it's the same process. You'll be notified of a public hearing and you can come back and, and voice your opinion at that point again. That's correct.
Let's go to item four.
So, what are we gonna do with that?
Item one, actually, item four, I mean, actually...
One point one F?
The motion, sir.
Motion to take no action or...
Do we need to deny?
No action.
No action.
You can just mention that you don't want to...
Mayor, mayor. There's a gentleman that we approved their permit and they just wanna say thank you. Peter Solis. Mr. Solis?
His item was already approved.
What is it? Could you should offer these things?
He, he's the applicant to the Palms Lounge. He just wanted to show us...
Okay.
To show face, to that class. I wish to know.
Oh, for the Palm, Palma.
Show that I showed up at class.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
With thirty days, it'll be a few hours, I mean, two weeks.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item F?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Item one point one F is a public hearing for a rezoning of point four zero seven acres out of lots two sixty-five, John H. Cherry subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, and the intent is to rezonate to C3 general business. The applicant is Nora Linda Garza, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January tenth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway, FM four ninety-five, along the east side of Cherry Road. The surrounding zones include agriculture, open interim to the northeast and south, and general commercial to the west. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, a portion of this acreage was rezoned to C3. The request now is to include the residential structure portion of the acreage for commercial use as well. Cherry Road is not a typical fifty-foot residential road. Cherry Road has a hundred and twenty feet of rideaway, thus reflecting that commercial land uses are expected. Recently, we have seen rezonings for a gold gym across the street, and they also purchased an additional three acres where they're gonna be building a commercial plaza and across, this is on, on the west side of Cherry Road, directly in front of the property. Given that many of the nearby properties are set back at least two feet from Cherry Road, it is expected that other rezonings to commercial may be coming forward in the near future. There was public opposition during the P and Z meeting. The concerns voiced were that the area was not suitable for commercial, that it would create more traffic, and that it would have an ecological effect on the property. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one F is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
And Mayor and Council, just for purposes of, of the minutes, this item belongs to Ms. Nori Garza. She is a council member. She is abstaining from this, and that has to be reflected in the minutes. So, she, just for purposes of the record, she is abstaining.
Okay. Anybody in favor or against this request? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing fine, thank you. Good to see you. Mike Bumm, on behalf of the owner of the property, Dr. Navva, and my associate, Laura Lisa Paz. Laura has been Dr. Navva's real estate broker for a number of years and was instrumental in her helping him acquire the property, the large home and estate immediately east of the subject property. And if you look on the aerial photograph, which I presume you have in front of you, there's a private drive that leads back to Dr. Navva's house, and there's a private driveway that goes to this house that Mrs. Garza owns. On Friday of last week, Dr. Navva came to us to see what we could do to perhaps slow this train down because a zoning change recommendation occurred at Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Paz, we also have the other property owner.
Oh, adjacent property owner. Well, how about that? On the north side.
And then she had on the south side.
Okay, okay, well, that, that's, that's good. I didn't know that. In years back, this property where Dr. Navva's house is, there was a private drive from Cherry Road back to his property, and there was an access easement given to the house that is Mrs., now Mrs. Garza's home. It wasn't then, but it was granted then, but it was to a garage in a specific location for a home. Now, it was not intended as a, as access from a commercial property. In two thousand, well, four years ago, Dr. Navva acquired his property, and according to your zoning map, which is on the city's website, all of the property on Cherry Road in July of nineteen ninety-seven, or two thousand seventeen, was zoned agricultural. Today, I got an email from your city planner that showed, well, the map's been changed, it just hadn't gotten to the city website, showing the commercial property on the west side of Cherry and a commercial rezoning of the front part of Mrs. Garza's property. Well, that happened, but it happened, and Dr. Navva didn't know that it happened, even though he'd been there for four years. In talking about this with him, it came to my mind that the change in conditions that warrants a change in zone had not occurred. It just got changed. The change hasn't happened yet. It only happens when something happens. It was all agriculturally zoned property until July of this year, and sometime after July, a change in zone occurred for reasons which I don't really know. The objection to, to, to this rezoning is you're increasing the amount of commercial zone from what it is, another hundred and fifty or to whatever the dimension is to that new zone, again, without consideration to the impact it has on the property to the north, which is zoned AO, and to the south, which is also zoned AO. We think the rezoning to this property at this time is inappropriate. It's not timely. It's only for the benefit of Mrs. Garza, it doesn't serve anybody else, and the property doesn't have public access to a public street. It has private access to a public street, but it's his access. She doesn't have access to a public street unless she creates her own. And so we would respectfully request that you deny the zoning at this time. Happy to answer any questions.
The zoning is being asked to change to single November, to C3. The recommendation is to...
To approve, Mayor. We do have some commercial properties zoned already on the west side, uh, before you enter the subdivision. I think it's Los Pinos. And then we just recently rezoned one...
Further north.
Further north as well on the west side, commercial. The front part of this property in question was zoned also about a month and a half ago or a couple of months ago, and so you see all the red zones there that are already zoned commercial at the time, so. The request is to continue the rezoning of the back of the property to a continuation of C3, and so it's consistent with what we already have in the, in the other rezonings that we've done in the area, so. Staff's recommending approval, and I believe.
How about the recommendation from Planning and Zoning?
Planning and zoning recommended approval, what we have here, Mayor, the debt, they're adding another hundred and seven feet, so they're going to be two hundred and seventy-seven feet from Cherry Road. The ones across the street are.
You want us not to grant the C3?
Mayor, I'd like an opportunity to speak.
Huh? You want to what?
I would like to speak.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm Nora Linda Garza, I reside at thirty-two hundred North Bryan Road. This property was purchased by my husband and me in twenty twelve. The purpose for purchasing this property was to move my real estate office there back then, that is still the intent for this piece. I am not going to be using that, that access easement, which is the neighbor's concern, and I do have access to a public road, which is Cherry Road, which is a state highway, so I do have access to a private, to a public road. Last year, about a month and a half or so, I was granted a C3 zoning for the first hundred and seventy feet, I am asking for an additional hundred and seven feet, which would incorporate the existing house that's currently there. I will be using that property for, for an office, office, office use.
You go in a hundred and seven more feet?
Yes, to incorporate the house that's already there, the building that's already there.
Is that the house I wanted to buy?
Yes, sir, that is the house you wanted to buy.
Oh.
And the back, the back property will remain R1, actually, my plan is to build my own home there, I'm planning on downsizing a little, and I would love to be my own neighbor.
So you're not going to have any, any commercial?
Yes, the, the commercial will be at the front and the back part, which is still R1.
Is your house.
I'm going to build a home there, yes, sir.
Okay. So the, anybody else?
May I, Your Honor, may I just ask Mrs. Garza a question? The existing driveway, which comes off of his private drive to the garage, what's your intent with that?
With the existing driveway?
Yeah.
Well, the existing driveway is, is within my property land, so I can leave what's there.
No, no, the easement, he's asking, would you?
Well, I, I bet, well.
Mayor, the other, the thing, and I don't want to, I don't want to overstep or, you know, sound like I'm being rude, but today's item is only addressing the zoning. The other items will come in when we present the, the actual, well, the, no, the subdivision plot. My intent is to, 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 I would love to have that easement transferred to the, to the, to the R1 lot, but if not, well, then, you know, that's, that's something, but I mean, I'm not going to abandon the lot, the easement at this time, I'm not in agreement to that at this point.
So your problem is you, you don't have access to the back way?
Me?
I mean.
If you, if you flip back to the subdivision, ma'am, you'll see that there.
This is just one lot.
Right now, it's one lot.
This exhibit is a proposed two lots, now it's just one lot.
And what's, what is now drawn up here is Lot Two, its access is on another narrow private drive to four ninety-five. If I heard you right, you're planning on building your house there.
She's going to have an access to Cherry.
She, that gives her access to Cherry without having to use the access that's currently there.
I don't need the access.
That's.
That's going to be up to you.
It's up to me, yes.
To whatever you want to do, and that's up to us.
What our concern is, can you put up the other map? That one, that white drive you have coming out of there, that white fence, we're going to block all that off, you're not going to have access to your house there.
You can't, you can't block my access to the garage.
Oh, you can?
No, so I have, my easement is to my garage.
See, you're, you're only.
And again, again, Mayor, this doesn't have, it's not, it's not up.
Yeah, it's not, let's go ahead, we're going to approve the recommendation, that's going to be my recommendation to the council.
Can I have a word, ma'am?
Then, next time she comes, you can come again.
Can I have a quick word, sir? I have the easement papers with me, it clearly says that the easement was granted by the previous owners to a house, to a house dwelling. Now, if she's going to make an office there, my first question is, why she's getting it a C3 zoning, why not a C1, if the intent is to get an office?
She's going to get a C3.
My second question is, if it's not going to stay as a house, and that building is not going to house, not going to stay as a residence and become a real estate office, then this easement document, which I have with me, doesn't hold valid because it was granted to a home dwelling by the previous owner from whom I bought it. So that easement ceases to stay because it's no longer a house, it's just a building which is going to house a real estate office, so.
But it does, it's like, she just said a few minutes ago, it belongs to her. Now, let me act.
It doesn't belong to her, sir, it belongs to, belongs to me, we gave her the easement, she just has a right of way.
But let, let us, let us go ahead and act on what we have today on the agenda, that's it, and then we'll talk about it later, because I cannot discuss with you something that's going to come back next week or next year, next month. So the recommendation is, what is the, the recommendation is to approve the recommendation from Planning and Zoning and staff? I'm going to approve. More so. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I say something, please? Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me?
Three ayes.
Ordinance forty-five ninety.
Mayor Salinas.
The, the, the adoption of the ordinance is forty-five ninety?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we go, then, anything else you have to discuss?
I would just like to add that I bought this place, I'm the owner of the one right next to her, the one right there in the picture.
Which one, which one?
Uh.
One on the north side.
That one right there, that is my property.
Okay.
And that was our dream home eighteen years ago, and we have livestock there, and I'm very concerned that, I didn't even know that the front part was already zoned commercial. Now, I was just informed that the back side is going to be commercial also, I'm very concerned about my livestock because, as it is, we don't, like, it seems like everywhere we go, there's no more pieces for farmland, for agriculture, for animals. This is just taking away from.
Well.
From, from what we do. I have, I have five other acres and different, different pieces of property around the valley.
So what you're saying, you want to come into her property and use that?
No, no, I don't want to come into her property, obviously, but it is, it is disturbing for the animals, you know, if it's going to be commercial all the way to the back.
No, she's going to build the house in the back.
Yeah, but it's, from there, it's pretty much, you know, taken to the back.
In the front, it's going to be commercial, it is already commercial.
Yes.
And now in the back, it's already commercial. We just approved it. Now.
So right now, we're just wasting time because you, you guys, before we came in, you had already decided.
No.
No, that's not how it works.
That's not how it works.
It seems that way to us.
Okay, well, think what you want to, but it's not the way you think. We, I did not know that this was the house that she, she was even dealing with.
She works here in the city.
No.
I'm pretty sure.
She sits over here, she stepped down.
She can sit there, she can sit there, it doesn't matter, she works in the city, we, we feel that we're, it's unfair for us.
Wait up.
Because.
Let me tell you, I mean, get together with them and see what the complaint is.
Yes, sir.
So we can find out.
I'll do that.
Okay, right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, please.
Go ahead and get together with the attorney and see where we messed up. Pasile para allá. Okay, item G. G.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, item one point one G is a public hearing for a rezoning of Lot One, Block Four, Bryan Park Edition. The property is currently zoned R2 duplex fourplex, and the intent is to rezonate to R3 multifamily residential. The applicant is Raoul Leal, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January ten, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located one-third of a mile north of Business Highway eighty-three, along the east side of Bryan Road. The surrounding zones include C3 general business to the north, to the east, we have large lot, single families, what's shaded in blue, to the south, we have R1, single-family residential, and to the west, we have a combination of both public with the school board or the school district offices, and we do also have R3, there's an apartment complex there on. Although there are some longstanding multifamily lots across Bryan Road on the west side, the site does but a large lot, single-family residential subdivision, and the future land use map also reflects a lower-density residential designation, reflecting that the existing R2 zone would remain the highest acceptable use for this site. Rezoning to the higher R3 density would also go against the future land use map and would also have a detrimental effect to the property owners to the east. There was public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the concerns voiced include that the area was not suitable for multifamily, that it would create more traffic and flooding issues, the board unanimously recommended denial of the R3 request. Staff is also recommending denial, as is our city manager, this is a public hearing, item one point one G is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like, would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request?
In favor.
Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Jose Carlos Gonzalez, on behalf of Mr. Raoul Leal. If I can pass this.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Last time when I came over, a couple neighbors made an objection based on the density and the privacy, there was the two issues, and I wasn't sure, why would they would say the privacy in the first place, because when you build a two-story home, you have a two-story, there's a one-story next door, I mean, where's the privacy? You're not going to go, you know, do your stuff in the backyard, you got your bedroom, so I don't think the privacy issue should be something that, that is strong enough for a neighbor to oppose to a project that is residential apartments, they're going to be nice apartments. We spent about four to six weeks with Mr. Acevedo and the fire marshal going back and forth, and the city engineer to give us a pre-approval, and I had a meeting myself with Mr. Acevedo, and he indicated to me that he has no problem approving this, and I had a personal meeting myself with him. All I needed to just change the zoning. In addition to that, he also mentioned to me that I had a good chance because across the street, there was already apartments, okay? So based on those grounds, at no point he indicated to me the density objection, and it's, it's not a commercial property, it's fourteen, twelve, fourteen apartments, they go to work, they park their cars, it's not traffic in and out. We made all the modifications and recommendations from the city, from the engineer, from the city marshal, and you can see, that was pretty much approved by them. That was a lot of thought, we, we look at the easements, we look at the dimensions, we look pretty much everything, I don't know if there's anything else that need to be modified, but we're willing to work with it if need be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? In favor or in opposition? Is there a motion to be offered?
I go ahead and make the motion to approve what has just been submitted.
To?
To go with our city manager and our planning and zoning request.
Okay, so the recommendation is to deny the request?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to deny the request to rezone the property from R2 to R3, all in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all oppose, say no, motion carries unanimously, thank you, next item?
Thank you, Mayor, Proton, item one point one H is a public hearing for preliminary and final plat approval of Ellis number six, or Ellis, a replat of Lot Six of Ellis number six subdivision being a point five acre tract of land, more or less consisting of all of Lot Six, and the replat of Lot Six, Ellis number six subdivision, it's in Arroyo ETJ and Texas Citrus Land Development Company LLC Engineering, with Salinas Engineering are the engineers that are handling this replat. What we have here is a residential subdivision that has ten residential lots, and between lots five and, and six, there's a fifteen-foot utility easement on Lot Number Six that was recorded with the plat. Upon construction of the subdivision, it was discovered that there's no utilities within that fifteen-feet utility easement, and what Mr. Greg Ellis, the developer, has requested is that we do a replat to eliminate that fifteen-foot utility easement, as can be seen this on the exhibit shown above. Each lot has its own water, sewer, and electrical services, the planning and zoning did recommend approval, staff is also recommending approval of eliminating the fifteen-foot utility easement via the replat, our city manager is also in agreement, this is a public hearing, item one point one H is now before you.
Is there anyone here to speak in reference to this item, either for or against? There being none, is there a motion?
Yes, I'm to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary and final plat of Lot Six, Ellis number six subdivision, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say no, motion carries unanimously. Next item? Disposition of minutes, we have the city council minutes from January eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say no, motion carries unanimously. We're going to change the order on the agenda, we're going to move to item four point five, and that's going to be the authorization for the Mission Boys and Girls Club to accept community grant from MAE Power Equipment.
Good evening, we actually have Mr. Cavazos here, he's going to present to us today. MAE Power Equipment was a recipient of a twenty thousand small business grant to improve their business and also for community involvement. MAE Power Equipment chose to donate ten thousand dollars to the Mission Boys and Girls Club for the IT infrastructure, that donation will help us buy computers, projectors, and educational software, staff and city manager recommend approval.
So, Mr. Cavazos, can you?
If I may, Mr. Cavazos, first of all, we're in great gratitude, on behalf of the city of Mission, Mr. Cavazos, for you applying to this small business grant, Mr. Cavazos applied for this grant, it was a twenty thousand dollar grant, the twenty thousand dollars has to be, or the grant had to be attached to a community involvement, and so Mr. Cavazos chose the Mission Boys and Girls Club to be able to share the half of the, of the twenty thousand dollars, so the ten thousand dollars will go to our Boys and Girls Club, there you go. And so we want to thank you, sir, for choosing our Boys and Girls Club for the opportunity to give back to, to your community, and, you know, Mr. Cavazos has been in business for many, many years here at Mission, and we're very grateful for that, and I know he's got his own presentation, but just to give everybody an overview.
I'd like to say a couple of words.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I remember when we were starting the Boys and Girls Club, I think Barry Valades and some other people were working on trying to get, get a building, and I helped convince Mr. Elliot Bottom to give money to the Boys and Girls Club to start that building, which is now named Elliot Bottom Building over there by the, by the high school. So at that time, it was only Boys, Boys Club, now, of course, we've got girls in it too, and all these people are marching around all over the country that girls mean something, I guess.
Amen.
I want, I want to thank the, the city council and all the people involved in the city for the help that we get from time to time in, in running our business, we run into a few things once in a while, and we get tremendous support from everybody at the council and the mayor, thank you very much. This doesn't work.
So we're going to do is we're going to take a picture with you.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
This is your check.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to accept the $10,000 grant from Mr. Cabasos and Mission Auto Electric Power Equipment. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Cabasos.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next item?
I'm going to recipon minutes. Acknowledges.
We're going to go back to...
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to go back to...
We're going to go back to...
To acknowledging the minutes?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry. We're going to go back to 3.0?
Okay.
So we're going to go back to the, to our...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the, we need to acknowledge the minutes from the Mission Civil Service Commission on December the 1st, 2017, Parks and Rec Department, from December the 12th, 2017, Planning and Zoning Commission, December 13th, 2017, and Mission Historical Museum, August the 21st, 2017.
More to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval of Mayfair Residential Subdivision. This is a proposed private subdivision, being a 21.59 acre tract of land out of Lot 7 and 8, and the east two acres of Lot 6 reese subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1, and the developers, Union Design Developers, and the engineer, South Texas Infrastructure Group. The subdivision is located at the northwest corner of Stewart Road and Trinity Road. The applicant is proposing 83 single-family residential lots, all exceeding 8,000 square feet, with the exception of the cul-de-sacs, which are a little bit smaller, but the average is about 8,000 square feet. The lots will be on city sewer with all utilities and streets meeting city code. The planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of this private subdivision. Staff is recommending approval with no objection to the variance on subdivision being private with a private street, subject to meeting the private street policy, meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and paying all applicable fees, such as park fees and sewer capital recovery fees. Item 4.1 is now before you.
Okay. Is there any questions or discussion? Or is there a motion to be offered?
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat approval for Mayfair Residence Subdivision as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item? Final plat for El Rancho El Potrero?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Item 4.2 is a final plat approval of Rancho El Potrero subdivision. This is a 50-acre tract of land, being all of Lot 2 and Lot 3, Lot 4 and 5, and Lot 6 of Block 1 Texan, Texas Guarded subdivision. This is in a rural ETJ. The developers, Peña Chapa Development LLC, and the engineer, South Texas Infrastructure Group. The subdivision is located at the northeast corner of Western Road and 3 Mile Road. The applicant is proposing 74 single-family residential lots, all exceeding the area requirements. The water CCN belongs to Agua Sud. Sanitary sewer will be addressed on individual onsite septic tanks and drain fields. This area is within, is not within city of Mission CCN. The nearest sewer line is about 2 miles away. The planning and zoning did recommend approval of Rancho El Potrero. Staff is also recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules and complying with all format findings. Item 4.2 is now before you.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion?
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Rancho El Potrero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Item 4.3 is for the authorization to purchase a one-year CodePell Toolkit subscription from a sole-source vendor to be used by the Code Enforcement Department and by the Building Inspections Division. What we're requesting, Mayor Protem and council, is a program or software that will allow the building inspectors to more efficiently do their building inspections. It's also going to help code enforcement in sending out the weedy lot letters and junk vehicle letters. The initial setup and one year of the software is $14,200. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 4.3 is now before you.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase for a one-year CodePell Toolkit subscription. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item? Ms. Ayda?
Ms. Mayor Protem and council, I come before you with item 4.4, with approval of resolution number...
1533.
1533, declaring the adoption of the municipality of Reynosa-Tamaulipas as Mission's sister city. We're very fortunate to have such a growing and dynamic city right across, and for whatever reason or another, we have not invited them to become sister cities with us, and we now have 18 sister cities throughout the Republic of Mexico, and so they would be number 19. They have requested our sister city invitation. They've asked us to become their sister city, and they've been looking at us for about six months now. So we held them back to be able to do this during the mayor's international brunch, and we'd like to make sure that Mayor Salinas would be the authorized person to sign sister cities with the city of Reynosa. So staff and city manager are recommending the sister city of Reynosa.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1533, declaring the adoption of the municipality of Reynosa-Tamaulipas, Mexico. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Mayor Protem and city council, at this time, I'd like to invite a representative of the city of Reynosa, and I was kidding with him, because I think he's learning a lot today. He happens to be the secretario of the Economic Development Office in Reynosa. Licenciado Mario Alonso Vialpando Ortiz is here with us today.
Gracias. Buenas tardes, honorable ayuntamiento. Reciban un cordial saludo de la doctora Maquia Ortiz, alcaldesa de nuestra ciudad de Reynosa-Tamaulipas. A nombre de ella, agradezco a la ciudad de Mission Teja y miembros de su cabildo el aceptar y aprobar el convenio de hermandad entre la ciudad de Mission Tejas y Reynosa-Tamaulipas. Este convenio que tiene por objeto acrecentar la relación de hermandad en las actividades productivas, servicios culturales, educativas, salud, turismo, construcción, tecnología, y demás que en un futuro se dé. Nos orgullece el haber logrado este convenio de hermandad y realizaremos todas las actividades necesarias para alcanzar el éxito del mismo. Muchísimas gracias.
Gracias, ustedes. Gracias.
Los esperamos aquí el día sábado, este sábado que viene para...
Para el desfile.
Para la firma, exactamente. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Okay. Next item? Authorization to accept contract between All Children's Nutrition Program and the Boys and Girls Club of Mission.
Yes. We need approval to accept the Texas Department of Agriculture, Food, and Nutrition in the amount of $37,200. Funds will be used to serve supper to 118 club members daily. Club is under contract with Silver Spoon Catering from the fiscal year 2017-2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mayor Protem?
There's a motion and a second to accept the contract between All Children's Nutrition Program and the Boys and Girls Club that will allow children to be fed dinner. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item? Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, city council. I have before you item 4.17. It's the authorization to solicit for competitive proposals for a tennis center. The construction and utility infrastructure for a state-of-the-art tennis center to meet the needs of a tennis facility for public use. The tennis center will be built to accommodate both school districts and USTA tournaments. The base bid will consist of five new courts and three refurbished courts. The alternate bid will consist of eight new courts. Other amenities will include a pro shop, concessions, and restrooms, covered pavilion, and a large walking trail and a parking lot. Staff and city manager recommend your approval.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the solicitation of competitive proposals for the upcoming tennis center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
I'm really looking forward to that one.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
We need that tennis area so bad, you guys.
Yes. It's awesome.
It's great that you're going for it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next item? Tax collections report.
Good afternoon. Item 4.8 is a tax collections report for the month of December 2017. The total tax levy is $20,92,468.72, and the amount of collections as of December was $9,363,371.53, which represents 46.60% of the tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
More to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the tax collections report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item 4.9 is approval of the December 2017 financial statements. Total revenue for the period was $11,759,007, and total expenditures was $10,264,435, with an unadjusting ending fund balance of $30,55,294. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the, approve the December 2017 financial statements as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief?
Mayor Protem and city council, item 4.10 is the authorization to accept a rifle-resistant bulletproof vest grant from the office of the governor, grant number 3494601. A total of 93 vests will be purchased by, to be used by our patrol, bridge, traffic, and our SWAT officers. The total grant award is $39,381. There is no match required by the city of Mission. The staff and city manager recommend approval of this grant.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to authorize the acceptance of the grant from the officer, office of the governor for rifle-resistant and bulletproof vests. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Great job, chief.
Good job. Thank you. Mr. Villamartes, hi.
I'm doing good. Good afternoon. I bring before you item 4.11, authorization to award contract for the construction of the Leo Peña Placita Park Mobility Improvement Project. Staff received three proposals. Staff is recommending award to D. Wilson Company, construction company offering the best value on both technical and price evaluations. All three proposals were evaluated by the committee. The cost of the project is $11,384,803. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
More to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to award the contract for the construction of the Leo Peña Placita Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations on that.
And we have Rick Carrera with LRGVDC here as well, and our engineer, design engineer, Mr. Chanin, and D. Wilson as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Before you finalize the presentation, I think it's important, the funding, where this is coming from. The majority of the funding is from the Lower Rio Grande Development Council. This is a transit grant.
Yes.
Can you explain the council's importance of that?
This is, the funding source is through the Federal Transportation Administration, through LRGVDC. We're the second tier to the federal funding for this project, and they have contributed to also other projects similar scope. And we will be having groundbreaking tomorrow. So we are inviting the public and anyone else that, city council and mayor, to join us out there.
Thank you.
So about $800,000 come from that grant?
Yes, about $800,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the partners that made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item? Albert Salinas?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, city council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of Flex Base Commercial Caliche for the Public Works Department. Flex-made material will be used for daily maintenance operations to include shaping, grading, roadbeds, preparing alleys and streets, filling and repairing streets' failures. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to solicit bids for the purchase of Flex Base Commercial Caliche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Yes, item 4.13, Mayor Protem, city council members, is the authorization to solicit bid for the purchase of hot and cold mix asphalt for the Public Works Department. Again, hot and cold mix asphalt will be used for daily operations to include a street and alley overlays and repairs. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
More to approve?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. Come before you, seeking authorization to submit final payment to First Vehicle Services. Final payment is in for the amount of $239,795.16, and it's for the performance maintenance on vehicle service after you end of contract and for inventory supplies that will be utilized by Fleet Department in-house operations. Fleet Department of Fixed Assets Division have taken stock, taken stock of entire inventory. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this payment.
This is a payment?
Yes, this will be the final for First Vehicle, and we'll end everything with them.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to submit the final payment to First Vehicle Services in the amount of $239,795.16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo, so then this is a final payment, and we'll...
Yeah, we're done with that.
Later, we're not going to have to be them coming?
Yeah, everything will be doing in-house.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Next item? 4.15.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and city council. I come before you to present item 4.15, authorization to solicit bids to replace the traffic signal loop detectors at various intersections, which are Cherry and Los Milagros, Cherry and Los Indios, Cherry and Colorado, Cherry and East Fourth Street, Cherry and FM 495, Stewart and FM 495, Mayberry and FM 495, Gold Street and FM 495, Bryan and FM 495, Los Cebanos and FM 495, and Business 83 and Los Cebanos. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the solicitation of bids to replace traffic signal loops as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, City Council, I'm here to present item 4.16. It would be approval of ordinance number 4591, calling a general election in Mission, providing for the election of mayor and council members for places 1 and 3, providing for polling places and other matters relating to said election. Early voting is said to be conducted at Mission City Hall and the Celestino Ramitas Fire Station, number 3. Early voting starts April 23rd from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. From Tuesday, April 24th through Friday, April 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On Saturday, April 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday, April 30th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Then on Tuesday, May 1st, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Election day polling locations will be Mission High School, Castro Elementary, Pearson Elementary, Bryan Elementary, and Celestino Ramitas Fire Station, number 3, and of course, election days from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Staff and city manager recommend approval of ordinance 4591.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 4591, calling for the general election. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 4.17 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have budget amendments in five different funds. First, we have the general fund. We have reclassifications, two, one for $14,200, which is from Capita Alley for the software purchase, and the second is $200,000 funds to Capita Alley for expenses related to the Leo Peña La Placita project. And then, in the utility fund, we have two as well. One for $57,765 for the funds from the EDAT project, and one for $11,655,62 for the funds for the wastewater expansion project. Both of these are carryover expenses that were remaining at September 30th, 2017. Then we have two in the designated purpose fund. These are the grants that just were approved in previous items. We have $39,381 in both revenues and expenses from the Officer of the Government for the rifle-resistant bulletproof vest grant, and we have $10,000 for the Boys and Girls Club from the May Power Equipment for the Community Share Grant. We also have an amendment in the drainage fund for $210,000, which is also to allocate funds for the Leo Peña La Placita project. And finally, we have two in the capital projects funds. We have $228,914 to allocate remaining funds for the Park Improvement Projects Bond, which is a 2009 CO, and $5,453,869 to allocate the remaining funds for the Event Center Project Bond, which is a 2016 CO. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Chief.
Mayor Protem and Council, I here before you to present item 418, authorization to apply for the 2017 Assistant to Firefighter Grant Program through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The department will, will be applying for pole radios and 3,000 gallon pumper tanker for department daily operations for the amount of $723,780. There is a 10% cost share match of funds required in the amount of $8,220, which brings the total amount to $804,200. Staff and city management recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor Protem?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the application for the 2017 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, City Council members, item 4.17 is the authorization to solicit bids for environmental remediation and waste management services. The property is located on the southeast corner of 6th Street and Conway, where the services are going to be, being requested, where the city is constructing a parking lot, a future parking lot. Services include existing tank removal and disposal with necessary soil testing in accordance with TCQ regulations. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids for environmental remediation and waste management services for this property.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the solicitation of bids for environmental remediation and waste management services for the southeast corner of 6th Street and Conway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I don't think there's any unfinished business. City manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am, just to remind and invite the general public to our Texas Citrus Parade this weekend, we have several festivities happening, starting on Thursday with a coronation. I know that the city, the staff, and the directors take great pride in preparing our municipality for this event, and so I want to thank them for their service. And at the same time, just reiterating the invitation for our groundbreaking, I know